All set.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Shaksbury Select Board to order. Welcome, everyone. We have minutes for approval. Minutes of February 3rd. We did have two members absent that night, but we do have a quorum for it. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I didn't have any corrections. Very nice job. I don't know if anyone else, Tim?
No. I didn't find anything.
All right. Hearing no additions or corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. So, three in favor, two abstentions. Does anyone on the board have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any announcements?
No.
Nope.
No.
No? I guess the one announcement I would like to make quickly is... Oh, oh, sorry. Okay. The town report will be mailed out this week at Sea Expectation. We have it here. It looks lovely. Once again, the auditors have done a terrific job. So, you can look for that. And also absentee ballots are available. You can get in touch with the town clerk if you are not going to be here on Tuesday, March... March, March 4th, is it?
Yes.
Fourth or fifth? Fourth. And obviously, you know, watch the roads. The town has tried very hard. I think the guys have been doing a great job trying to keep ahead of it. We are lacking salt. There isn't any to be had anywhere. So, that's been a real issue for us. We do mix the salt in with the sand to try to keep it from freezing. Again, right now, we don't have any salt. So, as many other communities don't have salt either. It's been a bear of a winter for all of us. And I know we're all really sick of it, but it's still here. So, have patience and drive slowly. Margie, did you have any announcements?
Yeah, I wanted to call attention to present and potentially future Select Board members about a training session on April 12th at the Holiday Inn in Rutland. It's the Springs Select Board Institute. And I think it's... This is a very reasonable option for us as far as the dollar amount. And they don't have a registration fee. If we get VLCT to come to us, it'll be at least $800 or so to get them.
Compared to what?
And I'd like to see if we can... Well, I think this is... I think this is free. If not, it's usually $35 or $40 for members, for member towns.
And what time is that? What time does kick off?
It's usually... This is nine to noon. Actually, I beg your pardon, it's this is a day. The actual... For new Select Boards training.
Nine to five? Nine to four?
Nine to three. Three thirty.
Well, it's great that they're doing it in Rutland. And usually, we've had to travel up to Montpelier. So...
So, it's free versus $800?
But I think because of the membership, the changeover, it's still gonna be worthwhile getting a training session here.
I think it is. Like I said, we're gonna be looking at four freshmen and one sophomore on the Select Board come March. And I think it's worth $800 to make it so that everybody can be there.
I would still recommend as many as can make this as possible. And the reason that I suggest that is that you meet other Select Board members from other communities and get all this anecdotal stuff in terms of what they're going through, have gone through. I've always found it really valuable. So, whether the board decides to have someone come down here specifically, but sometimes it's hard, especially with a, you know, with a fairly new board, to even know the right kinds of questions to ask. And that's why often these workshops, you have a real mix of new and veteran Board members. And I'm not saying one over the other. I'm saying, you know, perhaps both would be really valuable.
Well, it's probably the same material, though, right? Except for the meeting of other people.
I would imagine.
Well, let me ask, if I could. We've got three of us here. We've got one for sure and one maybe. How does traveling to Rutland on April 12th look for everybody? Is it doable?
Looks good for me. At this point.
Okay?
Yeah.
Tony?
I'm already there. Now, on the 10th and 11th, I may stay overnight, another night.
Okay. Jared? Okay. Well, if we can all do it, then that's great. I just want... My main thought was it would be more likely to get everybody to do the training if it were here.
Again, I think that the fact that they're doing it in Rutland, I think they've heard maybe the cry from the southern part of the state that, "Why is it always up in Killington or Montpelier?" Which is where it's always been. So, I think it's great they're doing it on the southern end this time.
And the other announcement is that I did put it in the Dropbox, and I might have sent it... I can't remember if I sent it as an attachment. TAM is proposing to convert a former sawmill to... in panel to a recycling facility. And the public hearing on this before the Board of Selectmen in panel is on Thursday night at 6:30 PM. It really only has to do with the town of Shaksbury because we would need to approve an amendment to the solid waste implementation plan, which is a regional solid waste management plan. And the Regional Commission will be after us to, at some point in the next several weeks, amend the SWIP, so-called. And I just got a very lengthy and very thorough communication from BCRC today about how we go about amending it and why, and what kind of criteria would a recycling facility have to meet to be in compliance with the SWIP. So, that is a little bit of a technical subject coming up before you. So, I wanted to announce that.
Say again, Margie, I didn't understand what our potential action relative to the...
To agree to amend the solid waste implementation plan to include this facility.
Oh, okay.
That's what it is.
Say, we could take our composting there?
Not composting. No, this is recycling.
Recycling.
It's construction and demolition debris. Historically, at least when I was in the field for a while, our construction and demolition debris went to northern Vermont only with a truck, three-quarters of the length of the state from here, or unless you could get over to New York State.
Well, we always had Burgess Brothers, too, down in Bennington and Lake Forest.
And lastly, we have two notices of scheduled tax appeal hearings for March 5th, which is the gully appeal. And March 13th is Bob Moffitt's appeal. And those are both at 9:30 AM here in Coal Hall. And they're interesting. The state appraiser comes down. Michael Bernhardt is the hearing officer. And we have our appraiser here and our Board of Listers. And so, I can give you more information about that.
What's that date again?
March 5th, and then a week later... Seven days... Oh, sorry, no. March 5th and March 13th. 9:30 AM. That's all I have.
Okay. And I have to apologize because I was working from our waterboard agenda, and I skipped our warrants. So, we'll move to the warrants. We have a retirement warrant, PR 17, in the amount of $69.62. Motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Mitch, Carl and Mitch. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have payroll warrant, 17, in the amount of $19,508.76. Need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Mitch and Carl, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Check warrant number 23. This is in the amount of $754.58. This is, Margie referred to it earlier, the mailing of the town reports. Need a motion?
So moved. Approved.
Carl and Mitch, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And then we have check warrant number 24, in the amount of $36,168.79. I'll go over it when I have a motion in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Carl and Mitch. American Rock Salt, when we still could get it, was about $4,500. Express Coffee, that's for the beautiful town report, $4,625. John Ray and Son, that's Diesel. Three, four, about $5,000 in Diesel. Mountain Air Assessor, that's for the Lister Department, $2,000. TAM, which is our monthly maintenance and management fee, $6,298. William Daley, about $6,000. I'm assuming that's gravel and sand.
And stone.
And stone. All right. Any questions?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Whoops. This will... I'll come back to this one, Margie. Okay. So, we've got our announcements. Do we have any public comments? Are we good without mics? I see we don't have our mics tonight. Do we need to...
Yeah, you're fine. I've never been told that. I'm not loud enough to be here.
No, it's not so much...
No, Jerry's asking, right?
I just wanna remind the rest of the board, too, that we're working without mics. And sometimes people who are watching spend the time to watch, but they can't hear us. So, we all just wanna be sure we're speaking loudly and clearly.
I have two questions. One, on the solid waste management panel change, is there any impact to Shaksbury or are we being brought in mostly because it's part of the... We're part of the whole conglomerate?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's mostly affected panel, but because we're part of it?
That's right.
Okay.
I mean, it would offer, let's just say, it would offer a local disposal option to our local contractors for construction and demolition debris.
Absolutely.
With some additional recycling activities that they're proposing.
But, I mean, it's gonna affect panel, I mean, because of the location of the site.
It would be the whole town.
It's not the same.
That's correct.
It's a part of the Bennington County Solid Waste Implementation Plan.
Okay.
We went through the same thing when TAM opened the municipal facility here, the transfer station. It had to go around to all... He had to send it around to all the other towns. Although the hearings were here, all the other towns had to sign off on it.
Okay.
As their part of the...
That makes sense. And second, if on the day of the town vote, the town has, I believe, three planning commission related bylaws that are being... Or, if I use the term incorrectly, two of them?
Two.
Two ordinances that are being voted on. If those are voted in the note, in the negative, but the Select Board has given the opportunity to transact business as it has been doing for the past couple of years, so the Select Board that has the ability, can the commission bring those issues forward again and re-present them to the public regardless, even if it was voted down, they could still be brought forward a second time?
Sure.
Okay. And would it obviously be a disregard of the voters, but it could be brought forward?
No, I would assume, and it would go through the same process that it had initially gone through, which was public hearings before the planning commission, public hearings before the Select Board.
Okay.
And, you know, again, exactly the same process that it's already gone through.
Okay.
We hope, obviously, that the community will support it.
Absolutely.
Support both of those.
And was it... It was said that, I believe, the planning commission sends over recommendations when it comes up, when they first brought it before the Select Board? Is that...
Yes, they send over a report.
Is that accessible?
I actually have an information... We were gonna talk about that potentially later tonight.
Okay.
I can very easily give you the handouts and the reports that were sent over with those.
If I email you tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. I'd be interested, and I couldn't find them on the website. I was just interested in reading them and seeing them on the site.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments? Okay. Bill, our treasurer, Bill Fisk. We have our fiscal year '14 budget update from you, right? You're coming up?
Yes.
Okay, you're on.
I'm on. Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have... I'm gonna pass these out one at a time. I have three documents for you. The first one is the comparison of budget and actual...
Save it, save it for each.
Thank you. I can use the exercise. So, this first document looks at what our annual budget was for the general fund, has the year-to-date. These figures are as of yesterday. Okay? So, they're really fresh. And then Margie and I have reviewed the remainder of the year in terms of her knowledge of operations and looking at the numbers what we anticipate receiving in revenue and projecting to a final result at June 30, 2014, which will be the end of our fiscal year. So, that's what this document does. We'll probably do this every month as we go forward toward the end of the fiscal year. And again, I'd point out to you that it's estimated. We don't know if it snows four times between now and when the snow stops. It'll be different if it doesn't. So, that type of activity. But we're looking at, right now, if you go to the second page of this document, about a third of the way down, total revenue is budgeted at about $16,695,000. We're projecting about $1,629,000 in actual revenues. The major difference in these two figures is there's a $73,000 amount in government grants that is related to the sidewalk project. And the question there is timing. We don't have any expense in this projection for it, and we don't have any revenue for it. If we... If the project begins before the end of the fiscal year, then obviously it will show up in the estimated revenue and the estimated expenses. So, that's a major difference between the two numbers. And if you add that back in, you'll see they're pretty close to budget. There are pluses and minuses going each way in some of these items, but again, this is an estimate. Taxes are... Delinquent taxes are coming in. The amount of delinquent taxes is less than it was last year, and that's a plus. We've received three of our four payments in state highway aid. We're expecting the last payment of $40,000, $39,778. In addition to that, you know, we have revenue from fees for services which come from our transfer station operations. And we have licenses for dogs. We have fines which are running below what budget at this point projected to be below budget for the end of the year. We have funds coming in from the trustees, a public fund for both our recreation and the cemetery. So, overall, we're looking at a total of about another $146,000, $147,000 in revenue between now and the end of the year. On the expense side, and just to give you the top-down look first, if you appear to turn to page eight, down about an inch and a half, two inches off the bottom, you see total expenditures, which we're looking at for the fiscal year of about $1.5 million in expenditures. And we will have, based on this projection, before we consider operating transfers, we'll have a positive figure of about $100,000. $99,746 is the end right now. And if we did this next week, that number would change somewhat. And that's a given. But if you go through the main... Go back to page two, and we'll go through the major Totally, the administration, total administration, we're looking to be about roughly $10,000 under budget. There are a variety of reasons for that. Some items are right on, some are a little over. Perks and ample insurance and bonds, about $3,700 over. And these items go back and forth, as you can see there. Coal Hall, we're projecting to be a little bit over budget. One of the issues there is the amount of heating fuel we'll consume this year.
And that's budgeting, spending the whole $10,000 on repairs and maintenance that we actually did budget.
Mm-hmm. Good. Good. Because we need to do that.
We have a bucket list. I don't have the contractors yet.
Right.
It's gonna be gone. We gotta do it.
We need to do it.
The total elections, the town clerk's area, we're projecting that she will be about roughly 10% under budgeted expenditures. Principally, in that area, we're looking at some costs that, you know, she's budgeted but probably won't spend, for example, on some of her healthcare coverage and other items. But pretty close to budget there. Finance, the payroll function, basically, is a little bit over budget. Payroll services are gonna come out right on budget. We're keeping wages will come out on budget as well. So, we're a little bit over on that, and that was a few hundred dollars. Auditing, we're projecting that it will come out about on budget, except for the cost of the town report, which is a little bit more than anticipated. Delinquent tax collector, that is the tax collector's FICA expense and operating supplies. Right now, we're projecting it'll be a little bit over budget because as the collector collects delinquent taxes, he receives his share of the penalty charge, and that's FICA taxable. So, the more he collects, the more FICA taxes. That's a budget overage to have. Treasurer's Department, it's gonna be right on budget. The listers, we're looking at the listers being slightly below budget at this point. We've got lower listed wages, but higher for the...
Appraiser.
Appraiser, professional services. Thank you. I was trying to come up with a word. I was reaching for another word. And on we go through public safety. Total general government, we're looking to be about, in total, on general government, about $14,000 under budget. Public safety, top-down total public safety, we're looking to be about $3,200 over budget. We expect that animal control will be right on, maybe a little bit under. That emergency management will be right on budget. The fire department, we expect to have a little bit of a budget overrun principally because of the cost of the air fund, excuse me, the air packs, equipment fund, air packs and that. And then other items go back and forth. Fire warrant, sheriff services, with the change in the number of hours, we're projecting to be a little bit over budget there, about $2,400 over budget. So, public safety, as I said, about $3,000 over budget. Public works, just going down through these highway administration, we have a budget of $361,000 for highway administration, which includes the wages and the health insurance premiums, mostly the personnel expense associated with the highway department. We've budgeted $362,000 in round numbers. We're projecting somewhere around $347,000 in actual. But of course, there's also the factor of how much additional...
And this is, again, being helped out by the fact that we're quite under on deductible expenses for health. Has really helped the budget so far this year. And that's helped this category.
It's actually about... We're projecting to come out at approximately $4,500 in health deductible expenses during the year, and we budgeted $18,000. So, this is picking up to $13,500.
And on average, it's about 60%. That's a budget.
On highway construction and maintenance, we have... The big difference here between the budget of 310 and the actual of 223 is the sidewalk construction. And again, that's the timing issue. $90,500 is budgeted for highway construction. If that occurs, then that will move over into the estimated remainder of the year, and we'll also bring in $73,000 in revenue to offset most of it. Equipment maintenance, equipment's being used, and we are projecting that we'll be over budget by about $6,600 in equipment maintenance. The garage, we're looking at, we're looking at basically budget overrun. Heating fuel is a major component of that overrun. So, it's the highway. And then we get to solid waste. We're looking at solid waste being about $10,000 over budget. Principal cause of that is the cost of the hazardous waste base.
No, the PCB oil removal.
Okay, well, that's included in that line item.
Oh, okay. Right.
Yes. Look at that one. And streetlights, we're projecting right about. The park, we expect it to be a little over budget because of issues with the tractor, I believe, we discussed. Needs there.
Well, we're just reserving some more repairs for that. Yeah.
Cemetery, it's always a proposition we really don't have any control over. It's a function in part on the number of deaths that occur, and burials that occur. So, total public works, we're looking at a budget of $964,000 against a projected actual of about $749,000. Planning and development, total budget in that category, about $27,800. We're looking at planned expenses or estimated expenses of $26,500. So, pretty close there. When you go through those items, there's nothing that really is huge in there, but there are all little differences going, pluses and minuses. Community appropriations were right on budget, which they should be, except for the rescue squad did not submit a request and did not appropriate for the rescue squad. The county tax, about $150 under budget because that's a little bit... Pretty good estimate of this. Debt service expenditures, again, very close, less than $1,000 different than $39,000 of debt service costs. So, again, as I said, total expenditures about $1,052,900. And that leaves us with a lot of excessive expenditures of about $100,000. Then we deal with operating transfers. We're going to take in about $39,300 from the various reserve funds that we have, and we're going to transfer out, and we have transferred out to reserves, $93,000. So, we're looking at, when all this is done, we're getting close to a break-even for the year. We're estimating the revenues will be about $36,000 higher than expenditures. Our fund balance, we began the year with $390,000 in fund balance. We expect we'll end the year with about $426,000 in the fund balance. So, this... So essentially, that number, I'm sure, will vary as time goes on, and we'll report that next month, and as soon as we get closer, we should be more accurate, more district.
So, so, if, question, if this holds true, I mean, this budget, we had been looking at a fund balance, when we built the budget that we're in right now, of $390,000. We're taking 120 out of that to apply to the budget, and what you're telling us is that we didn't, we didn't have to use that?
Essentially, yes, we have, we didn't have to use it so far.
Right, 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 okay. Well, then that's, I mean, well, who knows what, how the year will end up. That's good news, obviously. That would be very good news. Because it means we've taken 120 out of what we thought was going to be $270,000. And we're a little bit nervous about bringing that fund balance down to 150,000 to, going forward next year. So it looks as though we'll be in better shape, much better shape, with a, with a fund balance. It's a little bit more like what you'd like to see, Bill.
Yeah, to answer your question, I'd like to see a, a fund balance that is, I've said at different meetings, of somewhere at least $220,000, $240,000 fund balance.
Right.
And I thought, you know, the budget, the budget which was a well-crafted budget, did, did work at reducing the, fewer budgeting to have more expenditures and revenues by roughly $120,000.
Right.
And so far, that doesn't appear to be playing out. I thought we're getting close, as you said, to a break-even, so it could go.
Right, right.
I also have, there are no other questions, I'm, I'm having my expenses question. I also have balance sheets for the general fund, which are really quite simple in terms of what's on. Essentially, what we have are, we have cash position tonight of approximately $826,000. We have outstanding taxes due to the town of $164,000. And we have, we have amounts due from the other funds, the reserve funds are about $200. And on the liability side, we have retirement, this is the Veemers DB retirement payable at this point in time of about $4,800. And we have accounts payable, which are the voucher, excuse me, the warrant you approved tonight, are about $34,000. We deferred revenue, which means we didn't recognize this revenue of $145,000 to sort of match up with it, to match up with the delinquent taxes receivable. And to basically say that we don't wanna count, effectively, we don't wanna count our revenue chickens before the catch, if you will. So that's what we're doing. We owe the schools about $207,000 in the balance of the school taxes, and they just received the final accounting information from the state education department today, so we'll be working on that, and those funds will be dispersed to the school department appropriately. So as I said, we, we have right now, these numbers correspond to numbers on the budget actual statement, a fund balance of about $607,000, which will reduce down considerably as the, as the fiscal year winds itself out. The last thing I have for you is an estimated cash for the rest of the year. I'm sorry, thank you. This starts, this starts with our cash position, $826,000, estimates what revenue we'll collect. Some of these are fairly good estimates, others are not, you know, our best estimate, but you're subject to their variable. But we're looking to collect, if you will, about another $142,000 between now and the end of the fiscal year in total. That'll bring us up to cash available, if you will, of about $968,000. And then we have to meet some expenditures, we have to pay the balance of the school taxes, we have to pay the accounts payable and the Veemers accrual that we have in the books now, and we have to pay the additional estimated general fund expenditures that we were just talking about. So that will bring our cash position, again, if all these numbers work out, and if they do, it'll be, I guess, an accounting miracle, comes out exactly this, these numbers. But we're looking to come out with about $366,000. So I guess the message is, the cash position of the town's general fund is good, it's okay, it's solid, and you could argue whether it should be as much or less or more, but it's certainly, at the present time, and absent some really unforeseen event, we're doing fine, we have the liquidity we need to proceed.
Great. It's a really good report.
I'll give that to the treasurer.
Very good, Bill. You did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Bill?
Yeah, I have one, Bill. I tracked you through public works.
Okay.
And I didn't know that I caught the whole of the $200,000 underage that was out there.
Okay, well, part of that is the, is the sidewalk, about half of that difference is the sidewalk construction.
Right.
$90,000, that's a piece of it. The rest of it is coming out in, in various pieces. For example, what we call highway administration, we're budgeting to be about $13,000, $14,000.
Sorry, get me on a page before you go.
I'm sorry, on page five. Probably about a third of the way down the page. And a big reason for that, as Margie pointed out, we budgeted highway health insurance deductible, our share of health costs of $18,000. No one knows, but hopefully no one will need that much more healthcare, but we're projecting, we currently have spent about $1,800 against that $18,000, and we're projecting maybe $4,500 at the end of the year. So we're looking at that and saying, here's a pickup there of $13,000. On the, as far as the highway construction, see, most of those items are tracking, are tracking with budget, we're estimating that they will, they will go through budget. So we're pretty close on that, when you take care of the $90,000 that brings us from a few thousand dollars, one way or the other, kind of plus and minus things. On equipment maintenance, we're definitely over, we're over by $6,600, so that's a negative.
Yeah, and we have that 2009 international has been an issue. I'll have to go back to my other format.
Oh, you're talking, you're not talking to 206?
No, I'm talking, this is Ron's truck, truck one. And actually...
That's not the one we were planning on...
The 2012 international has blown the tire, so we're gonna have that repaired. The O2, actually, that's now, we replaced the old truck, the old one-ton with the 2013 Dodge, so that should level off. I still think there are gonna be operational discussions to have about highways, because when I give you, and I can show you the budget to actual, that from NIMR, which will show you the percentage of what's actually been spent, we've spent 93% of the gravel budget. And we usually, by this time of year, like to be down around 80% or less, because we have mud seasons to deal with. So that's why we're projecting that gravel expenses are gonna be over.
Well, what I'm really missing, I guess, is total public works is 200,000 under, and I can easily get to 100,000 with the sidewalk and a few other things, but I'm, I'm not seeing where we'll get that at 100,000 underage.
Okay, well, okay. Public works also includes, you know, the cemeteries, for example, there's a small pickup there, solid waste is involved here. But, you know, it's, it's a good question, Tim, I, I need to...
Yeah, I guess it's just a lot of little things that look like they're close all add up to $100,000, I guess is what I'm just thinking.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll look at this again, and send you, I can send you any of those more specific analysis I would like.
I don't think that's necessary, probably, just let me look at it, and if I can't find it, I'll give you a call.
Okay, great.
We are very close on our, 90% of our sand budget at the moment. And salt, we are actually at present at about 75% of budget. And we've got four loads ordered, it's about $1,100 a load. So I projected that at least we're gonna have another $5,500 worth of salt expenses.
We expect that.
But we have $9,000 to draw down on.
We expect to get that?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think so, we just don't know exactly when.
How about June?
I basically think it's really gravel's gonna be the issue of third quarter maintenance activities that we act, fourth quarter, that we actually do, once the roads have dried out a little bit. There was one year where we were actually at budget with gravel, and so the crew basically did not apply gravel for six weeks, seven weeks, you know, because we were at budget. So...
But I mean, we can, since we're under budget in public works, we can, we can over budget if we need more gravel, right?
Yeah, so we're a little bit of a different position, right?
And that really may be necessary, I mean, depending upon how the spring thaw comes in, yeah, it could be, it could be slow and fine, or it could be a huge mess.
That they can actually go over budget with, you know, X impact versus, you know, because the...
Well, yeah, and I think that's a matter of Terry coming and saying, this is what I need to do, and this is what this gravel is gonna cost, and the board being aware that you're gonna go over on a line item by whatever that amount is. We've certainly done that in the past for chlorine, when we've been over the budget, and we've had a very dusty summer. Or we've expended it, and, you know, again, it's, you're going into the fall and trying to get the roads ready for winter, and we've gone over budget. So, you know, certainly, and we have the breathing room here for the board to do that.
And the overtime was actually better than I thought. We've proved, and we did an extra, we double-checked that, we did another reconciliation today. So we're at about 67% through today. Well, what, they submitted payroll hours to me, so that was through the end of, so through Friday, this past Friday.
Has Terry been kind of trying to work with the schedule as much as he can?
Yes.
That's really reflective in that, because, you know, I think they've done, again, a terrific job with...
Well, and I have to say, he is in more to try to not have to call somebody else in, he'll come in and do it.
I've seen him out on Sundays. He's not getting overtime when he's laying that salt down or plowing. So, you know, when people see a truck going by, it's not always overtime, it could be the foreman out there...
Avoiding overtime, yes.
On his own time, yeah, yeah.
Is board action required if we have to overspend, if the road crew has to overspend the gravel budget?
We have, we have voted it in the past, yes. We, I, you know, I don't know what a future board would decide to do, we have authorized it.
And what do we do, we move, move money from one line item to another?
Well, what we've done is basically authorize the purchase of additional gravel.
We just say, okay, go ahead and do it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sometimes it would be at risk of under-expending in another line item, which, you know, you're just moving between line items.
Yeah.
But it's mostly to keep you informed and in the loop.
Yeah. Bill, I'll ask you, because there was, this debate goes on at the school board, when we have situations like this, some members want to move money from one line item to another to cover an overage where we have an underage, and others want to leave it the way it is and show that we, we misprojected here. You know, it all comes out in the same bank account, but they wanna, some of them wanna see, yes, we in fact budgeted this amount, we spent this much more, and that informs the next year's budget.
That's right. I'm of that camp.
Yeah, I would support that.
Administratively, in my philosophy. I want, I, and I think probably Bill, you know, can speak for himself, but I, I like showing expenses as they are incurred and where they've been incurred, even if we haven't budgeted.
Right.
Right, I mean, you're gonna deficit spend and underspend in, in line items.
Yeah.
But I, I agree that it gives it a much clearer picture.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. So then, are approving such an overspending is really just kind of a formality, really?
Yeah, again, I think as Margie said, it's a way for the board to be informed, and it, it certainly provides the backup to whomever it might be. I mean, for instance, the fire company might come in here with a request saying, you know, we're at a fire and all of our gear was damaged, and we're gonna go, you know, we need to replace it, and that's $5,000 in the fire equipment fund, let's say.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, but, and, and I think that that's a situation where, you know, the board has to be informed, and I think it makes sense for the board to make a motion in support of that, but...
Yeah, like, for the reasons that you were just hinting at, so that the, the road crew or the foremen don't feel like they need to, you know, try to make do when they don't really need to try to make do.
I mean, it's also, it's a public record, too. I mean, if the public says, you know, why did you spend $5,000 more? There is a public record of that action being taken, that it was in full knowledge of the board and...
For instance, the sheriffs.
Yeah.
Yes.
Expenditures, you made that decision in December, and so that's gonna be reflected. And I do know that there, you know, there, I have counterparts, you know, and maybe there are town managers per se, that really feel much freer to move between line items within a departmental budget. But our purchasing policy limits me and the foreman to expend less than $3,000 under certain conditions, so that doesn't get you a whole lot of gravel.
Since you asked me, I subscribe to the same philosophy, and I think budgets normally are a reflection of your plan. If there's a significant change in circumstances, then it may make sense to revise a budget, but generally, I'd rather see, the budget is our, our best estimate in financial terms of what's gonna happen during the year, so we ought to stay with that. And obviously, we're gonna record the actual expenses where they fall, so...
Any other questions for Bill?
Nope.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, very, very...
Very helpful.
Um, there's Jim. We have our town officer vacancies, Jim White is here, Jim is our crew warden. Jim, would you like to come up? As you all know, we're in the process of, we have put the word out to folks who might wish to be reappointed, Jim has, is throwing his hat in again, thankfully. And so we thank you for being here. We have a number of new board members that we thought it would make sense for you to come in and just talk about what it is that you do, and if you have any recommendations for us going forward.
Do have recommendations.
Terrific.
I think I started in 2009, and the first thing I did was do an inventory of the hazardous trees along the roads with, who was the road?
Ron Daniels.
Ron Daniels. I think we spent 20 hours driving the road, he was driving, I was riding.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was a lot of trees, I mean, 700 maybe, or something like that, that I considered hazardous trees. And we noted them, we didn't mark them physically, but we marked which roads they were on, which side, and what the position was, peachy to sigh, so, and he, Ron, knew every tree in the town anyway, so. And we prioritized them, and then I was thinking after, the road crew, I think I put them in danger. When you... You, these trees should be removed. And I didn't know the training they had, I don't know what equipment they had. And chainsaws are pretty unforgiving tools. It's hard to get hurt a little bit. And so ever since with Margie, I've been, not hounding, but reminding her that there's a training course available. It's three days of training and I think the policy should be that I wouldn't let anybody run a saw unless they could prove proficiency. And this is a course recognized by insurance companies across the country.
You mean game of logging?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it covers techniques and even if they recognize, I don't even want to run a chainsaw anymore after attending them. That'd be good. But I think it'd be, they, they work safer. You'd have less outside costs, you'd have to hire other people to do things because they could do more and that'd be safer for them, so.
And you've actually done some field training with some of our crew, didn't you?
No, I've never taught.
You weren't out there with?
No.
I thought maybe we were not, or maybe, maybe, I don't remember who when I first got here. Whether it was Michael Biddy or somebody was working, doing a little training. They've all, everybody's had, since had chainsaw operations.
Well, they had.
Everybody. And we made a big deal about, Vermont Local Roads has been running a lot of.
Oh, okay. Maybe, is that the game of logging?
No, chains, that was basic and, or more advanced chainsaw operations. So you had, I want to make sure everybody was trained.
I see, no, I didn't even know that.
So that, so we've done that. Now, the game of logging is more, that's more advanced. And I noticed there's game of logging one and game of logging two.
Well, there's really three.
Vermont Local Roads, again, is spearheading this, but they're taking an inventory of what towns are really interested in pursuing this.
Okay.
And, and because, at some point, I told Jim that perhaps we needed to have a roundtable discussion about exactly the kind of training our guys should have. Because I'm, I'm of the mind that we don't want to have them exposed more than they need to be. And the more you train, the more you instill a certain sense of self-confidence, whether or not it's warranted or not. And we do have contractors that we work with. And so the question is, you know, under what conditions are we going to bring in our professionals? And I think that the crew right now, I think, has a pretty good understanding of when we will do that. Anything, anywhere near any wires, total hands-off.
And a lot of the trees were, they were classified as to what the target, if they're going to hit the ground, that's all right, let it hit the ground. If they're going to get a wire or a building or something, then that's more expertise it takes to.
Yeah.
And they don't deal with good trees. I mean, their trees by definition are rough or rotten or dead or something. And they're more unpredictable and it's just, but I'm saying, I didn't even know that they did that, so I'm, I'm glad they did.
Yeah, just to keep you in the loop there. What I would like to do is to get, not only figure about, take another hard look at the game of logging one, because maybe that would be worthwhile. So we'll have to look at the course description if you wouldn't work with me on that.
Yep, I am with you.
Yeah, and then, and maybe sit down with our road crew and anybody that's interested, Ken is our, is very interested, I think. And then I'd like to get back to your inventory of hazardous trees and see if we can correlate what's actually, they've knocked off the list already. We can try to update that.
Well, Ron was gonna, and I don't know, Terry kept it up. Ron used to not check off the.
He was checking them off.
Yeah, and when Terry starts, he didn't, he didn't hit the ground on them, rather. And Ron knew, he knew all the trees.
Right, took a while to catch up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but I think also ultimately, I think we need a policy about what we're doing with trees on our roadsides because we have some very large landowners that are very die, very diehard and opposed in a diehard way to maintenance along certain areas of town, long stretches of road.
Well, that's a decision everybody made. I just try to follow it as I see it.
So at some point, we can work towards that.
What have they had for training, Marjorie?
Really, they did a full day training more recently, I think that was last fall. Chainsaw operations and just learning a lot more about how to fell trees carefully.
What have they got for equipment, like chaps?
Oh, yeah, everybody's got protective gear.
Yeah.
We've done that whole inventory, because that actually was, if I'm not, it might have been on our insurance policy.
Yeah, well, it should, it should. Should, yeah.
Our insurance carrier had walked through the garage in 2010 and I think that was on the list.
I will say, you know, we had some work done at our own place privately and one of the contractors that I know that the town uses made a real point of really complimenting the road crew and saying, making a point of saying how much money they've actually saved the town by having a contractor come in and fell the tree. And then our guys come in and do the cleanup work.
Yeah.
Because that, as this fellow said to me, that's where the big money is. And he said, you know, the guys have done it, they do a little job.
Ship right to the spot, just move like a whole crew. Everybody on one road all at once.
Saves towns, saves a lot of money.
Yeah, so I think, I'm feeling pretty good and I think the crew ought to, and Terry ought to be commended in.
Yeah.
Figuring out how to be more efficient in how we do that. Yeah, so it's really the question of the hazards, tree hazards, when to stop and when.
Yep. And to get all the training they can.
Yeah.
It's a good investment, if that's what it is.
What else does the tree warden do?
I don't do a lot. If there, I am following three invasive pests, writing about it from town reports, but anybody hates it. One's going to be here, if it's not here yet, had been identified as the emerald ashbore, which is a killer of ash trees, which are very common tree along the side of the roads. That's going to, there, it's in, across the Hudson River, two years ago, it's on its way west. It's in Berkshire County, it's coming from the south, it's coming from the west. It's going to be here in the future, that's going to be a, I'm going to lose a lot of little tight ash trees. But we're losing them anyway too, to another thing, probably ash yellows, but.
What are the other two, Jim? Because I haven't seen the report yet.
It's hemlock willia delget, which we don't have a lot of hemlocks up in town property anyway, but it's an important forestry. And the other one's an Asian longhorn beetle.
Yeah, Asian longhorn, okay.
That hits about 20 species of trees.
Wow.
They're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars to stop that, so.
What is the, when we see the purple boxes hanging everywhere, which, what's that gauged towards?
It's, the money comes from the emerald ashbore. But it's going to, they identify a lot, it's got a pheromone in there which is attracting to a lot of insects. So they come and it's a sticky trap.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a good tool for identifying things when they're, when they're coming.
So they're not trying to identify any one of these pests? It could be any pest.
Well, the money comes from the emerald, or the Asian longhorn beetle. The bad, he's really bad, because it hits maple trees, all maple.
Do you work, are you in contact with New York State and Massachusetts, New Hampshire?
Yeah, we went on a tour this summer over to, just outside of Albany anyway, where they just discovered the emerald ashbore and learned a lot about it, what, how to identify it.
A demo, Delmar or?
No, it was, if you said it, Borris Hill.
Borris Hill, yeah.
Okay. So that was a, was a good trip and we're in contact with the other people in the state that are looking for things.
What about the Asian longhorn? How far away is that?
Well, the year before, I went down to Worcester, Mass. And they're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars. I mean, they just, if they see the bug in the tree, the tree's gone. And we were down there on a 90-degree day, I mean, really hot August day. And there's this beautiful maple on these people's front lawn and they just, just take it. The only shade they had. But that's how important it is, is they're, they're trying to wipe this out.
Wow.
And then there's a, they're just spreading out and spreading out and investigating and.
Wow.
So, and that's federal money, because that's a region-wide problem. So the emerald ashbore is going to be here first. Nobody seems to care, well, they don't have the money to put it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a priority.
Maple trees, oh, right.
So that would be a huge economic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, and I, the time and I have the interest, a little bit of knowledge, so I'd like to be reappointed. And if anybody had projects, I'd be glad to entertain them, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm with the motion to appoint Jim to tree warden.
I have no, I mean, that, you know, we can do it that way, you know, as we interview and if, unless you want to do them all together, but I'm very happy to entertain the motion and the second. And we have any other, any questions?
I assume we're not expecting other candidates to come forward?
I think at this point, probably not. We've had the notice out there.
We've never, the day, so-called interviewed for annual appointments.
Right.
But I thought it was important to meet Jim because he has done a bunch of work for us in the past and.
Much meaning, meaning that.
Well, you, I don't, do you know Jim's background?
No.
Why don't you give him, you were the state, he was the tree warden for the state for how many years?
Oh, he was a county forester for four years on the earth in Pennington County.
He took the, he's taken trees down to the, to Washington DC, the National Christmas Tree, a couple times now?
Four.
Four times, four times.
Well, that's.
So we are very lucky to have him.
Nice.
Yeah. All right, so unless there are any other questions, we have a motion to appoint Jim as our tree warden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, enthusiastically, aye.
How do you vote? You vote?
I just said aye. I said enthusiastically, aye. That's why I'm.
Well, it's my button.
Molly, yeah.
She's not usually supposed to be here.
Oh, she's so great.
Okay.
All right, thanks so much. Thanks very much. All right, now, the board, we will meet again next, we're not finished, but I'm making reference to the other interviews. We have a vacancy, vacancy on the planning commission or an open seat on the planning commission and an alternate position and a full position on the development review board. We have received letters of interest and we will interview those candidates next Monday evening.
How long will it be starting on Monday?
Well, the pleasure of the board, that would be a regular, that would be a special board meeting. We'll also go over some town meeting presentation materials, so.
6:30 is the regular meeting time.
I suggest 6:30, 6:30 is fine with me.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll have Chris Williams and Michael Biddy.
And Jay Palmer.
And Jay Palmer, okay? Now, in the past, we have come up with questions. If board members want to send me questions, we can come up with, you know, if we want to ask the same questions of each candidate, I don't know what form the board would like it to take. Does that seem a fair way to do it?
Whatever you've done, I would think anything, you know, the way you've done it before, Karen. I wouldn't say they need to change it.
Okay, okay.
So to be clear, we forward the questions, you would do, ask questions, okay?
Yeah, no, no, put them all together and send them out to everyone. Does that work?
Yep.
And so you want those by?
Well, today's Tuesday, if I could have them by.
Friday afternoon.
Friday, yeah, yeah, the end of the week. Even Saturday, I mean, these, you know, it's, it's, doesn't matter. It's just for me to be able to get them together so that I can get them back out to you all in a form and we'll just go through them, ask the same, it was only three folks, so.
Remind me what we're appointing, what we're.
We're appointing an alternate position, alternate and full position to the development review board. And a full position on the planning commission. And these actually will all, would all potentially be reappointments of current members. With the exception of one, one member going to a full appointment from an alternate position? Okay, any other, any questions about the appointments and interviews? The next item was the V-Trans road and bridge standards. Y'all remember, we had spoken about that at our last board meeting. Margie has recommended, and I agree with her, that we should hold that for next Monday's meeting. Terry can't be here tonight and it would be really helpful for us to have his feedback, I think, before we approve that. So if the board is agreeable, we'll put that on next Monday's agenda.
Yep.
Okay, town meeting preparations. I think you all got the, the template from last year's town meeting presentation. Margie and I are going to be meeting actually tomorrow afternoon to begin updating that. I think we've all agreed that the structure of the presentation will keep it the same. And.
Oh, no, PowerPoint.
Oh, the PowerPoint, yeah, yeah. And what I would like to ask the board is if you have any suggestions, if you have any, you know, if there's anything that you would like to have mentioned at town meeting, please get the word to me. And what I'd like to try to do is have this as much together as possible for next Monday's meeting. Get it out to you over the weekend so that you can see each one of the plates and, you know, add any suggestions. If there are any specific recognitions you'd like to have the board identify to the community, anything like that, that would be really helpful, okay?
Are we planning an informational meeting?
That's, that was going to be.
Next, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Margie, was there something else on?
Well, the town report recognizes Bud Hewitt. I didn't know in the past if we've had a family member.
Well, you know, we'll.
Other times, it's been an employee occasionally or, you know, Joe one year and.
I mean, you know, right off the top of my head, for me, it would be recognizing over the last five years, even though the garage went down, we had a tremendous group of people with the facilities committee and the garage committee that put in countless hours.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's important they be recognized. That's the kind of thing that I'm, that I'm thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If there's anybody out there, sort of our unsung heroes, that, you know, would like to be sure, that we know about, but it's important, it might be important for the, of course, it's always important for the community to be aware of the people behind the scenes that do so much. So that's, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm thinking about. Now, the other thing that has, that had been, had come up, I see we have a couple of candidates here now. There had been the question regarding any sort of candidates forum. You know, that, my, my own personal feeling is that it might make sense at the. You know, that, my, my own personal feeling is that, um, it might make sense at the, at town meeting itself. In the past, sometimes the League of Women Voters would host candidates forums when there were a number of candidates running for different positions. We don't have a lot of contested seats in the town. I think maybe we only have one between the school and the town. But what I would like to suggest is that we ask the moderator of town meeting, Tom Daley, to allow candidates that may be there at town meeting, um, give them an opportunity to introduce themselves and, you know, say whatever they might like to say at town meeting. I'm not sure that a select board meeting, and of course, we're really only looking at next Monday night, I'm not sure if that's the forum at which, you know, we should be having a candidates forum. But anyone can step in and disagree with me. But that, that was one of the things that I was thinking of.
I, I agree that the select board should not, uh, you know, hold a candidates forum and ask questions or anything like that. When Margie mentioned it, I, I liked the idea mainly from the point of view of drawing attention to the election and candidates and giving them a chance to, uh, to, uh, be heard, be recognized, uh, because they don't really have much opportunity to do that.
My experience with, with them is that they're very unattended events, unless it's a really hot race. But I, my experience also was that they, the, meet the candidates night was part of a pre-town meeting and that's how it was advertised. So that, um, the incumbent select board was actually there, but they, it was really only a chance for the public to ask. People, the candidates would stand up and introduce themselves and explain maybe why they were running. And then the public asked questions, the current select board was not part of the conversation at all.
That was actually what I proposed when I saw the other emails, but if you're suggesting that it basically be done that way, at town meeting, I don't have a problem with it because it will be that much pressure in people's minds, presumably for the next day. Uh, as long as it doesn't go on infinitum.
Well, and that would be the moderators, um, that really would be his job, is to keep it. Again, I think we're, you know, we're not looking at a lot of candidates even. But that was, you know, we have two candidates here now, and how does that sound? If you were provided an opportunity to stand up and introduce yourself, and of course, it's on camera, you know, our, our town meeting.
Hopefully, they're not shy, they're gonna be on camera all the time.
That's right.
I, I totally support the idea, probably you.
I think my only concern is that, that I think that the board should remain non-political.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it would be great if another entity were to either introduce or ask or, or, you know, just somebody who is divorced from, from, from the town government. I think just the conflict, the appearance of conflict would be something to worry about.
Well, if, if nobody's gonna do anything except introduce you and say your name, uh, and questions are coming from the board, I, I don't think there's a real concern there.
I think if Tom, if Tommy does it, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I believe.
Yeah, what, uh, you did mention taking questions from the audience, did you?
I didn't mention that, actually, I, you know, maybe I did, if I did. I, I was thinking that it would really be an opportunity for the candidates to stand up and, uh, basically introduce themselves and perhaps say why they're running. I, I wasn't really envisioning a, a give and take. And I would, I know it's been done in the past, I remember numbers of years ago when I remember Tommy Daley saying, you know, so-and-so is here, and maybe I did it one year, I don't know, that, you know, so-and-so is here and, or I see some candidates, would you like to step up and introduce yourself? And it's really, can be as simple as that. But I don't remember it being, you know, being a, any sort of a back and forth with come up to the mic and ask questions.
Yeah, I would not, I would think that would be the, uh, uh, an open mic kind of thing would have the potential to be out of control, but. What might be worth considering is, say, uh, uh, the audience can write questions on, on a three-by-five card, give them to Tom Daley, he can perhaps sort through them and decide if they're appropriate ones to ask the candidates.
You know, I guess I, I guess I would hesitate, um, even with that. Without it really being organized for that sort of a purpose. I mean, this is, um, i- if it were a candidate forum, if it were organized by, again, in the past, it was like the League of, you know, Women Voters, um, and they had questions that were submitted ahead of time or, um, I, I don't know.
I, I actually like the, the idea because I've seen that done also very, very frequently in, in public meetings.
You know, here's what we could do, because again.
I don't think you're gonna get more than five people sort of writing things down.
This is not, the, the select board should not determine, I don't think we should be determining the details of this. What if I get in touch with Tommy and say, listen, this is what the board is thinking and we would put it in your hands in terms of the, how you would proceed with that sort of.
Yeah, yeah, you're too.
Because then it's, I don't, I, I, I agree with Tony that there should be no sense of any kind of, you know, political, neither school nor select board is polit, should be political anyway.
Well, yeah, and, and the other.
He's the moderator, it's his, it's his meeting, he's the moderator, he runs the meeting.
The other, um, entity that typically takes control of these kind of things is the media. And another option, if, you know, if Tom Daley might feel like running the meeting is not gonna give him time to sort through questions and that sort of thing, perhaps Derek, uh, could, uh, could do that. Could take the questions and then, uh, sort them, you know, into maybe categories and ask the garage question or the road question and that sort of thing of the candidates, along with.
Well, I, oh, Derek's not here anymore. Usually they, usually the banner does do a profile of candidates. I would imagine that that's going to happen. Have you all had a call from Derek?
Not yet, but I passed over to the banner, they were planning on contacting the select board.
Yes, I'm sure you will.
As well as Doug, BTM would be holding interviews as well, so both media outlets will be doing.
Yeah.
Informations.
Yeah.
Candidates.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, you know, drawing attention to the election and, you know, a lot of people do come to town meeting night.
Well, again, that's why.
Really, to me, it's logistics. If Dan thinks he can handle it, uh, that's fine, if, if it's too much to do, Tom, I'm sorry. Tom thinks it's too much to do in addition to moderating the meeting, uh, I would think somebody like Derek could handle that, uh, if he, if he agreed to.
You mean have Derek handle it at the town meeting?
Mm-hmm, yeah, just take questions from the audience and then ask questions, uh, through, through his filter of the candidates.
Well, I don't know, I, I would like, I would be more happy with Tom saying, here's Tony. Tony would like to say a few words of why you think you'd be good for Shastberry.
Yeah.
Derek, I think you get some people write questions and then which questions get asked, which ones don't, is this too? You know, if this is, can't answer this without, you know, bland minds of some sort. I think it's more of a meet and greet, introduce the candidates to have them, you know, give themselves a plug and try to, I don't know if we should be, it should be, it should have been done, if they were gonna have a, a debate, it should have been done, you know, last month or something by the media. I agree, the media should have picked that up, but not at the town meeting.
Yeah, I, I'd agree, I think, I think it's a little bit too fancy, right, for this town. Uh, and I mean, when I say this time, because of the size of the town, because you don't have major controversial issues this year, except of course, that the taxes are going up and that's always a controversial issue, uh, even though we're not gonna have a garage, uh, but they're going up anyway, that might be a concern to people, but, uh, otherwise, there's not a, there's, I, I don't think you're gonna have that, that many comments anyway. And I would, I would agree, leave it in the moderator's hands. I personally think that the moderator should have those three-by-fives available. Uh, maybe he'll consider that and, and run it that way, but I, by the time we start bringing in the banner, third parties beyond the, the town meeting and, you know, it isn't the League of Women Voters or something like that, they're just gonna talk a little bit. I don't foresee it as being particularly controversial. I may be completely wrong.
I don't see a, a lot of difference between having Tom do it and having Derek do it. To me, like I say, it was just logistics of.
Well, I think Tom is a real, he's an established known entity of this town. He's been doing it for years and years and years. Derek works for, uh, a private paper, he's been here less than a year. Uh, I don't know that people know who Derek really is, except that they've seen his name in the banner. Uh, I think they'd probably be a whole lot more comfortable with Tom.
Oh, I, I completely agree. And again, I think we need to be very understanding of the fact that it is the moderator who runs the meeting. We're there to make our, our presentation, to present our budget, but he controls the meeting, we don't. And, and I, you know, I guess I, my tendency is to, is to keep it simple. I do think that if we had controversy in town, if we had multiple contested elections, it may, it certainly is something that probably would have come up from someone other than the select board. Hey, it would be a great idea to have a forum. But I think that, quite honestly, town meeting, people get so tired. And what always kills me is that, and maybe it'll be easier because we're not presenting the town garage this year, but people actually get there and they're very engaged and then they get really tired and they actually leave before raising their hand to vote yea or nay on the town budget. So, the whole reason for coming there, which is to approve or disapprove the town budget, they walk out thinking, oh, everything sounds great, looks great, and then they never vote on the budget, so.
Well, I don't think we have much of a disagreement here. I think we've agreed that we will have a candidates introduce themselves and the.
Well, I will talk with Tom and ask him that.
And ask him if he wants to.
I will say that we would like for him to provide an opportunity and hopefully, he will agree to that.
And what about the, the taking questions on three-by-five card part? I got, I think Carl said he was in favor of.
I agree, but I, and as long as Karen assures us to show, raise that, Tom is a, is an option that we, as members of the board, really endorse, uh, that's fine by me.
How, how does everyone feel about that?
I, I think, you know, what they said in the town panel.
Do you want me to suggest to Tom that, that the board, that the board thinks that that might, it would be a good, um, idea?
I would read.
I think you should.
Or maybe we'd, maybe, oh, no, I guess we'll, that board can't ask any questions.
I, I'm not sure I go along with that.
What's to suggest, you can mention our names, the two of us.
Yes, I will say, I just didn't want to present it as a majority of the, you know.
No, there's clarity on majority.
As a full board deciding that this was what, um, but I think ultimately, I'm gonna say it's in your hands, Tom. That's, that's what I would feel comfortable with.
Maybe you could ask him to ask a few questions of the candidate from his background of the last year.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Been brought up in town, if you want.
I, I will certainly convey to him the, the sentiments of the board, uh, what I'm hearing from the board right now. And I'll let you all know, um, what he tells me, okay?
Yep.
Is that good? Okay. Jeff?
Would those same sentiments apply to the school board candidates?
I would, you know, certainly suggest that he speak, I can do that, that he speak with the school board chair, to see if, you know, they would like, I, my guess is that Tommy would say, you know, do we have some candidates here? You know, who are the candidates, would you like to step up and introduce? But, but I will, I'll, I'll talk with him about the school.
Regardless of whether they're, I'm sorry, interrupt, whether they're listed or written candidates?
Right, no, I know, we have, we have someone that's running, at least one publicly running is a write-in candidate.
Yeah.
So, whether there are others, I don't know. Did you have your hand up, Tony? No, okay, okay.
The, uh, the other thing about town meeting night I was wondering is if we wanted to actually have like an open mic about the garage. Uh, I think we do have a controversy there and I, for one, feel like, uh, we've spent a fair amount of time trying to guess what the mood of the voters was based on the last vote and wondered if there would be some value in, uh, taking input from voters on what, what more specifically their yes or no vote meant and how they think we should proceed.
I'd be concerned if that would just be kind of anecdotal. I mean, you're not gonna have, how many people we normally get at a town meeting? Maybe seventy to ninety people? How many people actually speak? Six? And if you get five of the six that are very supportive of it or five of the six that are not very supportive of it, what, what, what does it get us really? The issue's, the issue's dead.
Well, I don't, I don't.
The issue's not dead, the issue, the garage is still there and it's still trying to fall down, so we're still trying to deal with it. What I see is we gain, yes, we gain anecdotal evidence or anecdotal input from it, but that's what we have now. You know, we have the people we talked to and the people Ken talks to at the country store. I think, uh, a few more, a little more input, I don't wanna, you know, make a circus out of it, but, you know, ten or fifteen minutes, give everybody who wants to talk, you know, thirty seconds or a minute and then move on.
What's the optimal thing that you see could come out of?
That we get, uh, a, a lot of the same opinions coming forward.
And then what?
And then that guides how we move forward with the, uh, plans to create, uh, build a garage.
So, if you get ten people that, that are all in favor of one way or the other, that, you would, you'd want the board to act on that?
I'm not saying we would do what those ten people say, I would say it would form, it would inform how we move forward.
Yeah, they do have those little non-binding forms that they put out at the meeting to, like, you know, that they.
You could do a survey right there.
A survey at the, when you walk in, you have the survey, put it in a box, you know. Do you think we need a town garage? Yes. Do you think, you know, North Road site is a good spot? Yes.
Well, the door, the door allowed to do that, Zwillp.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, those, I know they do have.
It's only an advisory, it's only a.
Yeah, the state, the state.
I don't see why that would be a problem.
I don't think that would be.
That actually might be a better, uh, a better thing to do.
But then you have to figure out what question to ask.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would, I would imagine that the next board going forward, at some point in time, and what seems logical to me is November, we have a, we have a vote coming up in November, is that you put advisory votes out there to the community. One of the concerns with the survey, with the, um, that petition that people signed, that the board chose not to put onto the ballot because it was frankly, it, it was confusing. And there were people that liked part of it but didn't like another part of it, but thought, oh, well, I'll sign it anyway. And I think frankly, that served, that, that petition could have been broken into two. You know, do you support buying the property next to Cole Hall? Do you support putting a garage on the property next to Cole Hall? Because we had Art Whitman sit there and tell us that he thinks we should buy that property, but he doesn't think the garage is suited for it or that that property's big enough for it, but he signed the petition because he thought it'd be a good piece of property to have. So, um, you know, there was, no matter what you, um, ended up with in terms of the community voting, there would be no clarity coming out of, wouldn't have been any clarity coming out of that for the board. So, I, I hope that the board, um, will go forward trying to get some advice from the community or a, or a sense from the community. or a sense from the community that does bring some clarity. And I think that's a matter of how you put the, how you word the language.
How would you propose going forward with the town garage? And if you get an essay back, you know that you're thinking about it.
I don't think we'd get an essay though, I think it's gotta be either.
Yes or no.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
That's true, I mean, that's what you have to do.
I mean, you know, it was interesting to me, even in looking back at last year's town report, or presentation, we had a whole slide that was on this property next door. I mean, that was in the town meeting presentation. We had a map of the property, we showed how we would, how we would even try to fit the garage in there, and the fact that that piece of property right there wasn't big enough for it. But that just went beyond people, you know, at that time, they didn't even want, they didn't wanna spend any money on it. And as we got closer, everybody kind of forgot.
You know, I'm not quite sure what the benefit of having, I, I kinda like the idea, if you will, of some kind of piece of paper people can put on, but I think what question is asked has to really be thought out. Because if we ask the community, do you, do you support having a garage? We know the community supports having a garage. Everybody knows that.
Right.
The question, do you support spending a dime? Excuse me, what was it? Seventeen cents every week? And the answer was no. So, what are we gonna ask them? Will you support a nickel a week? Or seven cents a week? I'm only, I know I'm acting somewhat facetiously, but, but I mean, I, we know the town supports having a new garage. We know the town had voted and said it won't spend, what, thirty-six cents a week for the garage?
Well, we've got at least anecdotal evidence that, you know, Ken's guys that he talks to says it's about going into debt. People that I've talked to says it's about where we wanted to build it. I think we could probe a lot of those questions, and I actually like Mitch's idea better than mine about doing it on a piece of paper where we can, where we can ask the questions and see.
Put them in a box on their way out?
And I agree, but I'm only saying those questions need to be a little more sophisticated than perhaps what we asked in the past. And then think about what, what will they say?
Write up a few.
Yeah, I agree. It's asking the right questions.
Jay, I'm sorry.
I would say it would be more appropriate to have something like you're discussing in November when we have another election. It'd be closer to, you know, another vote if we're gonna have another vote on the garage. It gets away from all the back and forths we've had in the last couple of months.
Usually they let it die down for a second.
They let it die down, let people think about it and say, hey, maybe seventeen cents a month is and all that there. Or, I suppose, that it would be closer to whenever something is gonna happen with the garage.
I mean, instead of keep rubbing salt in the wounds.
Well, and the interesting thing, I mean, you're gonna, you'll have a situation where initially there was this sense that the school tax was gonna go up at least eight cents and, and now it's looking like the school tax might go up two cents, you know. So, you know, I think that, I think there's something to be said in letting, letting the dust settle a little bit. And I do think it, you know, it needs to be well-framed, the questions. And I think the board is gonna need to take a look at what makes sense going forward. I think, you know, you're gonna have a new board and I think you're not, you all need to spend some time on this thing.
I think also a practical point is taxes are going up under this budget, and then to start asking people, on top of that, will you support more money for a garage? It's a wrong time to ask that question, maybe.
Well, don't forget, you're only getting, depending upon what the weather is like that night, you know, if we get a hundred people, we'll be lucky. And, and that's the reason that I think more of a, of a general election that's already in the works, you're not spending anymore to do it. And if you're going for an advisory vote, it gives you an opportunity to get info, once again, get more information out to the community prior to a vote like that. It allows you to digest what perhaps comes back in a general vote and gives you the time to put together some sort of potential proposal for the following March meeting.
Well, would it be appropriate to ask three or four or five questions in a, in an Australian ballot advisory vote?
Just for November?
Next November? Because what I'm seeing we could do in a town meeting, kind of informal questionnaire is, you know, pick up some opinions. And I, I am aware of what you're saying about people still having emotions about it, but when I think of an advisory vote in November, I think of one question. And I don't know if I'm gonna be able to ask one question in November.
I don't think of one question. I don't think of one. Why would you be limited to one?
Well, how many can you ask before it becomes, I mean, can, that's what I ask first, is can you ask three, four, or five questions in an advisory vote? Do you, do you think the garage should be here? Do you think we should build a garage at all? Do you think the previous proposal was too expensive? Is, would it be appropriate to ask all those questions on a November ballot?
Well, again, I think you need to, you need to determine what are the most important questions going forward. I think the idea.
Well, I'm asking what, how many questions is appropriate? I just.
I think with regard to questions, the more questions you ask, the more problems you're gonna have in analyzing the results of those answers.
Right.
I mean, it becomes really kind of rough. You start asking six different questions and you get all these different numbers, how are you going to weigh them? It becomes pretty complex.
Well, I think, you know, for instance, this whole petition that a hundred and some odd people signed, some understanding, some not understanding, had to do with the location of the garage over here. And it also had to do with purchasing that piece of property. So, you know, potentially you could have one question again, you know, do you think that the town should purchase the property adjacent to Cole Hall? If it's even available? Do you think that the town garage should be located there or at the transfer station? Now, frankly, that's assuming that the board does determine that it can fit there. I don't think it can fit there, frankly, with everything you need to do. But I'm not sure we wanna get, continue with this discussion unless it has to do with what we wanna do for the upcoming town meeting. And I, you know, whether we know enough time to put together.
That's what I'm still asking, and I'm kind of arguing with Jay a little bit about whether or not it's better to let the dust settle through town meeting, or it's, to me, it's , it still kinda seems like an easy opportunity to get some information. And Carl, to your point, yeah, it's harder to analyze a lot of questions. I would feel less obligation to come up with an answer from an informal questionnaire at town meeting than if I put four or five questions on a November ballot as advisory, then I would feel like I oughta be able to come up with an answer then.
I turned, I mean. The only thing I thought today is that November is, what, three months away? Nine months? Same math. A lot of things gonna happen between now and then. The economy might improve or might get worse, and it certainly have an impact on how people would feel towards the town garage at that time. I personally feel that one reason why I got pretty much shot down this time around was because the economy was so bad for so many people. And it would be much closer in November to be able to do what the town wants than it would be for us to make a determination now for something that's gonna happen in the future.
I, I actually agree with you, Tim. I think between November and March, or February, we have to pour on the town ballot, you've got three months to determine what the voters intended to get something prepared for March. I don't know how long the last garage, not to suggest a garage's gonna be voted on between November and March, but why not start off the board, a new select board in March with some awareness of what the voters intend? They'll have a better knowledge being voting on the next day, what the school board taxes are gonna be, just as in November, they're not gonna know, you know, they're gonna be wondering what our next year's school tax is gonna be as opposed to what. So, it just, it gives you an extra four or five months, whatever amounts of time is between March and November, or six months, to start to have an awareness. By all means, if you want another advisory question in November, but the new board, select board, has more information from the town voters beginning of March, beginning on day one of a new board, and then decide, is it something we wanna put for November? It just gives you, you just lose six months worth of time that you could be working on something and going for a place of information. So, I'd agree with Tim.
The questions that if you wanna do in this meeting doesn't all have to center around the town garage either. I mean, we could ask some general questions, add in the direction, what our priorities could be, you know, just give them an A, B, C, D list, or, you know, those little, they give them, hand them out as they walk in, they drop them in a box as they walk out. And you sit there and look at them and say, oh, wow, that's interesting, we didn't even think of this. Or something like that.
Does someone want to suggest putting together such a list? Because we've got two weeks before town meeting, okay? We really don't have a lot of time.
Correct.
And unless you really know with a, you're gonna have a limited number of folks there, not everybody's gonna pick up this thing, and if you, I go back to what Carl said in the very beginning, which is, what do you hope to get from it? I'm not convinced that you're gonna have any real clarity from it, but I'm certainly willing to go along with what the board would like to do. I am not gonna put together a list of questions if somebody wants to volunteer to do that. If you have questions in your mind as a board going forward that you would like to get a very limited response to, because that's what it's gonna be, a very limited response, and frankly, often at town meeting, unless it's really controversial, it's a fairly, I'm gonna say, a homogenous group of people that are there. You're, you're not getting a huge range of this community.
I think I'd agree with you, Karen, but if you're gonna do it, I mean, just make it as limited as you can, if you're gonna do it at all. Otherwise, don't bother.
I, I think that my, I'm guessing, and I could be completely off-base, I'm guessing some questions will come up at town meeting. There may be people that will come forward and on their own, come up to that mic and say, what, what are your plans for the garage? That may open the discussion right there, which I think would be perfectly fine, you know, if the community wants answers, if they wanna have a dialogue at town meeting.
I'd also like to pick up on what you said with regard, you know, why you would support the idea of doing it. Jared?
Yes, yes.
If I gather, what you said was he'd give us six more months, the new board would have a feel for where to go, so that by November, you could decide whether you wanna put on a ballot or not. Was that the?
Well, you could also decide what you wanna put on the ballot.
I would argue that that is the best reason why you shouldn't do anything, because if you're trying to judge, and as you noted, people in November are gonna be thinking about the next year's taxes anyway. So, if you're gonna take a reading of what people think in March in order to put something on a ballot in November, when you know their thoughts are gonna be thinking already, all right, and what's my next year's taxes gonna be? You're gonna be wasting possibly a lot of time in the belief that this is what they said six months earlier, so that's what they're going to feel six months later, when in fact, they may have something completely otherwise going on in their heads, but you will have acted on that believing it's a constant. That's what they really want. If they say, we really want a garage, or we really want to buy the property, or who knows what. By the time you get to the point of the vote in November, their minds are gonna be somewhere else, because circumstances are very likely gonna be something else. Even if the circumstances aren't, they're gonna have fear that they will be after the first of the year.
May I respond?
No.
Then, then what do you do from March to November? If you don't, then you're still guessing about what they're gonna want in November anyway.
We were talking about having a questionnaire in November.
Right, we can still have that questionnaire. I, I guess you just don't see harm in more information, and if I understand, the board does not act in opposition to the idea. And so, if there's a willing sponsor, I'd be happy to help with questions. I've done surveys as a profession before, so clarifying questions and trying to read data, I'd be, I'd be happy to assist and help as a pure citizen if that's possible. But I just don't see harm in gauging, regardless if it's ten people, fifty people, I don't see harm any more than there's a harm in having a conversation with a person and getting conflicting information from how they feel. But you still have that conversation because you want to know how this one towns person feels about an issue. If there's ten people there, those are ten involved citizens who are willing to come out, that's set a lot about their interest, and why shouldn't we at least find out what they, what they say, what they believe?
Well, one thing I will caution the board, we had a hundred and fifty-six people sign a petition, okay? That was asking the board to consider something, to put it onto a ballot, and the board voted against putting it on the ballot. That, you know, if we get a hundred and fifty-six people at town meeting, we'll be lucky. So, you know, I guess I just really do wanna caution that you think about the questions you wanna put on there, and you think about what, what you're going to do or advise the community that you're gonna do based on those questions. Because you may have a lot of people saying, we already signed something, we already told you what we thought. And what, are you ignoring that? So, I just, I really just want, wanna caution, I don't wanna spend a whole lot more time on this.
Well, let me say, what do you do with results? Do you make them public? If you, with the results of whatever your answers are from this questionnaire, do you make them public?
I don't know.
Well, if you don't, then people wonder what happened to my vote? And if you do make them public and decide not to act on it, we're right back with a petition.
No, it's exactly like the state legislature who, who puts out the questionnaire at the meeting just to inform him. That's all we're asking. I just don't see that it's that big a deal. And to me, the garage is still the big issue facing this town. We've been working on it for four years, we're gonna be working on it all year long. I, I don't see how we can let it sit until November, take an advisory vote, and put anything together by March. What if we need, decide we need it in a new location, or a different sized building, or, or whatever we may decide is gonna be the garage? Anything we're gonna do, I think we're gonna be thinking about and working about all year long. And this questionnaire is just a small.
You have very limited budget next year. You're not gonna be doing a lot of professional studies of any kind.
Right, but we're gonna be thinking about it and all the time.
I think most, most of what can be done in terms of research on the garage has already been done. I think there are, the primary decisions to be made for this board are, are you going to negotiate, enter into negotiations on a piece of property next to Cole Hall?
I, I don't really think we need to debate the garage right now. We're debating whether or not we have a questionnaire at the.
Do you want to volunteer to put together a questionnaire for consideration next Monday?
Sure.
Okay?
And I welcome help from anybody that wants to help.
All right.
Jay's volunteer.
I'm sorry, Carl.
That's one practical thing. If you want a better feeling, I would think that you would have much more turnout for the November election than you would for the one coming up, which would give you a better feel for what the town really wants to do.
I would agree.
We may do November two.
I would agree.
We might do vote November two. I just don't see it's a, that's a big deal. But I would make it a motion that we put a questionnaire before the voters at town meeting about garage.
You mean a, a.
I, I.
On the way in?
A survey like the, the survey that the state legislate, state rep puts at town meeting.
That's a, that's a little vague.
I'd like to wait until we have the.
Get the questions, get, get the list of questions.
I mean, again, on Monday.
Really, I don't wanna do it if everybody is, really thinks it's a bad idea. To me, it's a very small thing to do.
Yeah, I have no, I don't think it's bad, but I don't think.
What I'm thinking here is I don't have a second for my.
For me, it would depend upon what we were asking the community. I would need to know what questions it is you want answers to.
I'd agree.
And, and I can't agree to put a, put something out that I have no idea what the questions are gonna be. And I, you know, I'm just saying that. I can vote right now to say yes, I may take a look at it next Monday and say, I, I don't think this is bringing any clarity, and I think it's gonna cause you to spin your wheels.
I will, I will put a questionnaire together.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have a.
I'm sorry.
We have, we have one of the other candidates here for the position, and if we wanna get another interview out, or are you gonna wait till next Monday?
Oh, Jay. I didn't know he was here. Was he here for, would you, would you like to come before the board for your interview?
No, you're gonna develop questions, to be honest.
We actually had planned on doing it, yes, that's right. Yes, I'm sorry. You threw, you threw me, you threw me, Mitch.
What's my term of office of an alternative? Was it in the town, in the town report?
That's a good question. I don't know when he was, when, there was, there was no limit on the appointment.
Were you just appointed last year as an alternate?
Would he have only been one year? I'm considering it would just be one year, but I don't.
Really?
I think, I think Michael Biddeys asked for three years. Maybe he may have got a lucky three, I don't know.
Well, we'll look into that and we'll let you know, okay? But if next Monday is, we had decided that earlier in the evening, that we would interview the three, the two DRB and the one planning commission about the next Monday. So we'll let you know. We're tied.
Yeah, I'm just gonna care, ask a little bit about it.
Michael Biddeys asking to be appointed as full member, and you, and Chris Williams on the planning commission. Okay?
Sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay. All right. Okay, now, let's see, we have the health insurance plan selection last. At our last meeting, you'll remember, we had to select the second alternative plan with Blue Cross. We were not quite sure what the road crew might be interested in paying up. There's a certain level that we, as a town, are budgeted, have budgeted towards it, but if they wanna buy up, they certainly are allowed to do that. And we had assumed that they would wanna buy up to a platinum. They're actually looking at the other gold standard plan that they would buy up to, as opposed to the gold blue for you, which is what we had, we were funding a portion of. So we need to, I need a motion that.
So it's not the platinum and the gold?
It is not the platinum, it is the gold blue for you, and, and/or the gold standard plan, but they.
Nobody can afford the platinum.
They can't afford, they don't wanna buy up that much. If they buy up, they would buy up to the gold standard.
I don't even know, I can't even remember, it's been so long since I've looked at those sheets. What is the big difference?
It's difference in money, it's a difference in money and.
In the copayments and also co-insurance, and on RX, the pharmacy.
Copay and drug.
One of the, one of the guys had mentioned that when you get down into the details, which we didn't really do, the gold standard looks good to people who have high prescription costs, rightfully, because it's a fixed cost as opposed to a percentage cost.
So five dollars versus 10%.
So essentially, it doesn't mean anything in terms of our own budget. It's the choice that they would prefer over the one that we had made the assumption they would prefer. So I guess I, you know, to clarify the record, I'd like someone to make the motion that we make a provision for them choosing either the gold standard plan or the gold blue for you non-standard plan, and we will fund up to our original amounts for the gold blue for you.
I would make that motion.
Okay, Ken and Mitch?
Sure.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town administrators report.
I very briefly did hear back from Grandview Cemetery. I did put a copy of the response in drop box I have, copies to give out to people.
That'd be great. This, and Ken, if you would like.
I don't know what you'd like to do with the response at this point, this was.
I have a comment on the response. I can call it in.
And I was not able to talk to Cheryl. I had stepped out of the office when she stopped by.
I have a question while Carl's bringing lady his.
I can just tell you.
Oh, boy.
I just wanted to give everybody a chance to read it. When I was just reading it this evening, I, it appears to me that North Bennington donates $1,000, and Shasbury is being asked to donate $2,000. And it was my understanding, it was primarily a North Bennington cemetery, and if it isn't primarily a North Bennington cemetery, why isn't it more public or included in our records? And why are we learning about it now? Why would we be paying twice as much as a town that primarily uses it, I thought?
I don't know the demographics of all the folks in that cemetery. I know that the cemetery is located in Shasbury.
I'm going back to when I, when I was taken around by Ken Coonrad, and I specifically asked a question about that, and he, and he told me that was really not anything that we were involved with. I remember clearly, because I physically went with him to each of our cemeteries, and I asked about that one, said, no, we don't, we don't need to bother going to look at that one, that's not ours.
Right, I think the sense is, have you spoken with Ken since all of this happened?
No.
That might be the thing to do, just because I, you know, it's, it has not been anything that we've had to attend to, because this group, private group, has attended to it. It doesn't mean that North Bennington, the Shasbury folks, and again, I know for a fact that they are buried in the north, in that North Bennington Grandview Cemetery.
And what private group are you referring to?
Well, the North Bennington Cemetery Association.
Grandview Cemetery Association.
And I guess, based on what they, they sent us, I'm trying to, trying to figure out who that is. Edward Jones, I don't know what this refers to, I've got a name, a number of withdrawal, Bank of Bennington withdrawal.
No, Carl, what I suggest is that, I'm not sure that they were invited to join us, but I'm not sure, you know, that the folks were comfortable coming out on a snowy night, and they could join us perhaps at a future meeting. This really is gonna play out next December, when this board decides whether or not to put an appropriation request on the ballot, or in the budget. And perhaps this is also something that our own cemetery committee could provide some information about.
Sorry, I was just thinking.
Because some of these folks have been at this a long, a lot longer even than I have, and the town clerk has some history, some insight into this.
And I'm assuming Ken Coonrad has not received copies of this?
Not yet, I just got it. Just came in this morning, so I will let, I was gonna send it to the cemetery committee. The select board had asked for this.
Yes.
But our own cemetery committee has not even seen this, nor know, really known that this was, this topic was.
And did you say they were invited to Shasbury?
Grandview, in my letter, yes, I, to them, I had.
Oh, that's right, you did.
Invited people if they felt comfortable, or to just do what was easiest, and trying to explain, this is, I think this is addressing the financial aspect of.
Well, you had specific questions that you asked, and I don't think they answered any of these questions.
And I know there are, it's gonna be more difficult, I think, getting answers to all of the questions that are there, that the board was asking.
You know, I think the idea of them maybe coming to one of the cemetery meetings, our cemetery committee meetings.
Local, smaller group setting and collaborates.
They know, they, some of them will know each other, I think that might be a good way to handle it.
Way to ease into this.
Yeah, because our cemetery committee has gone through enough now that they understand the process that we need to have followed in terms of the, you know, the death certificates, the burial certificates, all of those things being recorded with the town clerk, and where are these things being recorded now? I mean, if we have Shasbury residents that are buried in that cemetery, does Judy get that information as the town clerk? You know, we had some of those issues in the past with the paperwork not getting filed properly, and I don't know if that's happening, we're required to do that. If, you know, our residents die, we have to follow them. So that might, I think you're right, Marty, that might be a.
Can somebody tell me what I'm supposed to make of the second sentence on page two that says the Grandview Cemetery is located in the town of Shasbury and the village of North Bennington?
Just that?
It's jointly owned land, or it's town, town lines overlap?
It's the line draw, is, the line goes right, I think goes right through it somewhere.
Oh, the line goes through the middle of it, okay.
Yeah.
And we have to go back over, there's, when we discussed this at a prior meeting, we did get some answers to some of the questions that people were asking, about whether or not we're gonna have to take over cemetery operations.
Yeah, we looked at the statute.
Yeah, so I, I think this is a, I just wanted to let you know, we're, this is come back your way, and that we can put it on a future agenda and, at your, at your wish, you know, in March, April, May.
Since you just got the letter today, and I just saw the letter too, can you explain to me, possibly, maybe I'm just too thick to understand, what the reference to the Edward Jones references to $5,980 in Bank of Bennington, are these donations they're telling us about?
Well, they may be CDs, CDs.
That's what they're doing, their banking.
If the Edward Jones, it could be, he set up an account for perpetual care.
2,500, 2,500 withdrawal. Yeah, for perpetual care.
It's like, you know, we have funds, ours is the George, is it George Hawkins, or that funds our cemeteries?
So based on this, the only thing that, the only funds they have that come from donations are 2,000 from Shasbury that they're asking for, half of that then from North Bennington, and donations of $400. That's all, that's all the money that they actually seek as opposed to their earnings on their, on their funds. Is that correct?
Well, it looks to me, no, like they had additional $5,980 in the bank.
Well, that was, they added 3,425,80 from the interest on the perpetual care fund they maintain.
Yeah, so that's my other point, is that the only, the only entities donating money, a Shasbury of $2,000, North Bennington of $1,000, and donations of various people presumably of $400.
And what they're not reporting on is any lot fees?
Yeah, they have, they have lot fees in there, $450.
Where?
Yeah, they reference it.
All the way down there.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say what they, what they're yearly, how many do they sell?
How many they put out, they just said what they charge.
Do they have corner markers like we do, or?
Yeah, doesn't give that. $450 plus another $450 for the perpetual care fund.
Can I also ask a question, since I presume Karen, you probably know this, but I'm of their, of their local residents, that is, members of the board, are any of them Shasbury residents? How many of them are Shasbury residents, I should say?
When?
When Metcalf is the only one?
I don't know, he's the only one. I would have to work at the actual addresses to see if.
I'm just saying, we don't know off the top of your head, you write names?
Correct, yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna, yeah. Okay, so that is to be continued. Marty, town administrator's report, I do wanna get back to our agenda for next Monday night, because we need to talk about the bylaw.
I really don't have a whole lot more to add specifically for tonight, except just to elaborate again that we do have a, the workman's comp claim in from the garage's incident on Sunday, and we'll see how that plays out.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Has anyone, you know, gotten the tire, looked at the manufacturer of the tire, and signed, you know, maybe preempt the insurance company figuring out, was there a defect in this tire? I mean, it could have been a lot worse than it was.
You mean to actually have a tire inspected by, say, Bennington Tire?
Yeah, I mean, see what type it is, maybe go down to the tire warehouse or anybody else.
Well, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll make sure they, they talk, we were dealing with Bennington Tire.
Bennington Tire.
And they've had some suggestions, so.
Well, how about the, the gauge, that would be easy enough to check.
They've been testing that, and that's, yeah, it's, all the other truck tires are all reading about where they should be.
So the gauge looks like it was correct?
Gauge, gauge looks fine.
So it was only like 60 pounds, and it was a 90 pound max? So they're, so they're a unseen, that we couldn't see, or I'm wondering if it checked if they've had other tires of this similar nature fail in the same way, whether on the road or.
Probably do a Google search and find that real quick.
I went over there today, actually, I looked at it, it's, I mean, visually, the outside of the tire, there's no, there was no damage to the tire other than where it blew out. I mean, like it hadn't, what I'm saying, it hadn't hit something.
Yeah.
It was just, you know, there was no way to anticipate it, but I could say. I mean, the tire, the tread on the tire is good. The other looks like a new tire.
That's what, that's what I'm concerned with, is they've got a bad batch of tires out there, maybe we can get a free tire instead of paying the $400 for this four tangier.
Right, 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 because I thought when we were putting the budget together, Terry said he'd just gotten new tires. That's right. And we didn't have to put that in the budget.
Could have done something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Marty.
No, and we had a, a close encounter with a fire engine as well, the same, the last couple of days, but I think we can pursue that through the, the other insurance company, not our own.
They hit us.
They hit us. Our truck was stationed.
Car truck.
You couldn't, yeah.
Was the driver insured?
It was the fire company, one of the other fire companies. I think it was that fire down in Bennington.
I don't understand that.
Fire truck.
I have a question, and it just popped in my head when I heard about the fire truck incident, it's only marginally related, but do we have insurance that covers our volunteers when they're fighting a fire?
Yes.
So if one of them didn't have health insurance, we would still be able to.
And workman's comp.
Yes.
If they're actually covered.
Yep.
We, we've had a number of law claims in the last 12 months, we're gonna see our rates unfortunately go up.
From the insurance company, or from the fire department?
We've had two in the last 12 months.
Injuries?
18 months. Yeah, they were not severe, but enough for lost time, and they were both on scene, actually the same person. So in a, in a roundabout way, this brings me back to, I'd like the future board to consider, again, whether or not we need, might benefit from the legal cities and towns, risk management program and training opportunities. By the same token, I do know that the current workman's comp carrier has an online university, which I'm gonna take another look at with Dave Newell, he did send me some information, where we could have our firefighters and our highway crew doing more safety training, but it is online.
And that'd be, that'd reduce our rates if they, if they.
That I have to figure out, I'm not sure it would.
Well.
But.
I would think it would have.
It would be nice.
Yeah. Take a course, you gotta get some back there, probably.
Right, I think, yeah. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Now, the other thing, so next Monday night, we're looking at town meeting presentation, we're looking at interviews, we're looking at the potential questionnaire, and we also should be looking at perhaps an informational meeting on the bylaws that are gonna be presented by Australian ballot. by Australian ballot. Right?
Send out all the packet that came up to the select board originally.
I have, I can scan and send this to you, but I had some leftovers. This was very briefly, if you wanna share, what came over from the planning commission. Very brief paragraphs about the flood hazard regs and the compost bylaw. And that's what Chris Williams was suggesting that we make available, if the board still wished to do that.
I think that's great. You know, he'll be here next week for the interview. So it would seem to me that it would make sense to do this. If we can have Dan or somebody, Dan?
Yeah.
Would it be possible for CAT TV next Monday night? No.
It's gonna be a bit of a stretch. A lot of meetings have been moved around because of winter break and President's Day.
Yeah.
So we have banks and select boards, CDC, and MAU all that night.
Ew, wow.
Our hands are tied.
Wow. Okay. You don't have any volunteers that could do it and then for replay later?
We can probably find somebody, but it might be a little difficult around the side.
All right. Well, we can check that. We'll check that. Should we check that, or can you check that?
I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Thanks, Dale. It just seems as if we have, you know, if we have some DRB folks here, if we get anybody to show up for the meeting, it might, that might be, might be a good way to do it. What do you think?
Sure.
We're talking about an informational meeting-
Next Monday night.
On the bylaws, as part of the select board?
Yes. What time would you like to, when at four?
Karen, one quick thing. Did you mean DRB or planning commission?
Planning commission.
Well, sorry, yes. We'll have DRB interviews and planning commission. Chris will be here for the planning commission.
Even though I couldn't be at the last meeting, I did watch it on television.
So if we did that, we could, we could schedule that for 7:00 maybe? Well, let me think. How many? We have three people to interview. 7:15? What's a good time for that?
I just want a time so that I can-
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if we need it 6:30, if we wanna do the interviews first.
Yeah.
And then have, you know, we could do two interviews and then we could do Chris and follow the info right after that.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
7:15? Anything else?
Nope.
And our town meeting presentation will also go through this bylaw stuff?
Oh, well, we need to, we need to. I'm hoping, again, I don't think Chris will be there. I'm hoping that there'll be other planning commission members there that can help to, help to present, answer questions.
6:30.
Yes. Anything else?
Nope.
Marty?
Not that I can think of, except that I'm ready for spring.
Oh, good lord, yeah. Just- It's been long, long and hard, very long and hard.
Getting to the point where you feel like-
Yep.
You're working, but you don't feel like you're getting things done.
You're getting along.
Better day, I'm sure.
Right, you keep seeking the snow there. All right, I'll, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
I am.